We're going to call this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, April 18th, 2018. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a presentation this evening honoring Newington professional secretaries, and Sophie Pachaki is here with us this evening, filling in for our board clerk, to accept on behalf of the secretaries. And I have a resolution, as you know, to read. This is a resolution honoring Newington professional secretaries dated April 25th, 2018. Whereas Wednesday, April 25th, 2018, has been proclaimed as Newington Professional Secretaries' Day, and whereas the Newington Public Schools Secretaries are qualified and dedicated professionals who relate positively to students, staff, and parents, and whereas the Newington Public Schools Secretaries perform secretarial work of a complex, confidential, and responsible nature, and whereas the Newington Public Schools Secretaries set the tone for the school by their pleasant and courteous manner and prompt attention to questions and requests, and whereas the Newington Public Schools Secretaries contribute to the success of the entire school system and are always willing to go above and beyond their assigned duties whenever necessary. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 25th, 2018, as Newington Professional Secretaries' Day. Be it resolved that we urge all the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington secretaries on this very special day. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. If you'd like to say anything?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all of our secretaries who do a really amazing job supporting our students, number one, their schools and central offices, and thank you to the board for this recognition. We all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Board comment? Dr. Braverman?
The secretary, whenever we go to one of the schools, they're always the first people we see. They buzz us in, they let us in, they maintain the atmosphere for the school, they do a great job, and the students appreciate them. They know pretty much every student that passes by their office, so please tell everyone thank you, Secretary.
Mrs. Stowe?
I just want to reiterate that secretaries are like the backbone of the district, and I really appreciate every time I call anywhere and go anywhere. Everyone's welcoming and very professional, and even neighborhood-wise, if I break up a story about my kids, the kids are always like, "Oh, I love this secretary, I love my school." Like, they just, you know, everyone just engages, so we totally appreciate that. And Sophie, I totally appreciate every time I call you, you're right on top of my stuff because I'm not always great with technology or anything of that, and you're always like figuring it out right away, so I totally appreciate that. Thanks.
Mrs. Guyan?
I don't even have to raise my hand. So exciting. Yeah, I also, I want to say thank you to all the secretaries. They do a fantastic job at all of our schools. I know there's a lot of things that they do that the public doesn't get to see in the summer months and vacation months, and during the school day even. They are very, very busy, and they keep things moving very smoothly for the teachers and the students, so we greatly appreciate it. And Sophie, thank you for all that you do for us. It is, you're the best, so thank you.
Mrs. Dros?
So when I first became a teacher, my sister gave me advice, she's much older than me, and said, "Get to know the secretaries. They actually are the ones who run the district and the building." And she is absolutely, she was dead on. You guys are awesome at knowing what's going on, keeping the building running smoothly. The kids love you, and so I just want to say that I appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. Vassella?
And again, I guess, just to say thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. Students, staff, everybody depends on the office, and the office is always run with such efficiency and friendliness, and it just is a super, so I thank you again.
Okay. And we hope you all have a lovely day next Wednesday, when you're celebrated in the district. We'll now move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities, and our phones are open at 860-665-8736. And not seeing anyone calling in, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Dr. Braverman, if you would, read the motion for that.
I don't have one, but I think I can read it.
Sure. If you'd just put your mic on. Sorry.
I move to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2018, for a regular meeting, and approve the minutes of April 4th, 2018, for an informational meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vassella. Does anyone have any comments or changes to the consent agenda as presented? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have no old business, and we're moving on to new business. The first action item is school calendar 2019-2020. If someone can read that motion. Mr. Tufell?
Move the Board of Education adapt the 2019-2020 school calendar as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
And seconded by Mrs. Guyan. To start the discussion, this is what we've talked about at an executive committee meeting, as well as at our last board meeting. We discussed the calendar in some detail. Does anyone else have any more commentary before we vote or any questions on it? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is a resolution honoring our 2018 valedictorian and salutatorian. Someone could read that motion. Dr. Braverman?
Move the Board of Education proclaim Kang Du Yan as valedictorian for the Newington High School graduating class of 2018, and Jessica Bullwitz as salutatorian for the Newington High School graduating class of 2018.
And seconded by Mr. Tufell. This is the motion we pass every year. We signed the resolutions this evening that get presented for the first of three, I believe, times to the valedictorian and salutatorian at the Scholars Breakfast on Wednesday, May 30th, which is a great event if everyone can make it. So, some really incredible accomplishments from these two students that will be highlighted over the next couple of months, and their accomplishments are included in our packets this week, as you've all seen. They are already, the number one and two are determined at the end of the first semester of senior year, so it's over now, although I highly doubt they would fail anything at this point. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to Kang and Jessica. Next is an action item regarding adjustments to the 2018-2019 budget, and the motion with the actual dollar amount was in our packets. If someone can just make the motion so we can discuss. Mrs. Guyan?
Move the Board of Education budget for the 2018-2019 school year be reduced by
And a second? Seconded by Mr. Vassella. So, on Monday evening, for those of you who weren't tuning in, the town council set their budget. So, we have kind of a dichotomy of things to do. The first is we have to get down to the number, so we have to make a formal motion and pass it to get down to that number. The second part of it is actually determining how we're getting down that $806,501. On the second page of the motion, and this whole thing can be done two different ways. We can either just pass one motion with a list attached to it, or we can go line by line, item by item. This is the list that has been put together by myself, the administration, and through input with everyone else over the last several months about what priorities are. I'd like to start just kind of going through it, explaining what each of them are, what they mean, and getting feedback from everyone on if there's agreement in these items, or if there's not. And does everyone have this, on the same page now? Okay. The first adjustment is a reduction to our fuel accounts in the amount of $24,000. If you all remember, we had a conversation a couple of months back that Mr. Jacobowitz was in the middle of negotiations over our fuel prices, and this, my assumption is, is the amount you're comfortable reducing based on the rates we got in the contract? Okay.
Yes to that.
Thanks. Any questions or discussion on this item from board members? Okay. I'll take that as a sign that everyone would be okay reducing fuel because we don't need to spend as much as we originally anticipated.
God bless.
The next is a reduction, and these aren't necessarily in priority order. The next is a reduction in general supplies of $20,000. As we all recall, we've gone through several rounds already of reducing our supplies, so this is not instructional supplies. Dr. Collins, is that right? This is, this is the general supplies. Is there a rationale behind the $20,000 figure?
Just what we thought we could afford to cut.
Okay, so we're just trying to trim anywhere we can, and we still feel like we'll be able to accomplish what we can. Mrs. Dros?
What types of things, you say general supplies, what would that look like?
So, anything that we house in the central supply warehouse. Inex cards, I was going to say chalk, almost said chalk. The dry erase markers, right? Folders, all of that kind of stuff. General paper supplies. All of the general school supplies. Things that aren't specific to a building level or department.
And that wouldn't affect our students directly?
No, because we do have, we do have some in stock now, so we feel we can, we can just kind of whittle it down a little bit.
And so this is just part of your review of everything, just to try to keep getting lower and trimming where you can?
Yes.
Okay. Further comments or questions on this one? Okay. The next adjustment is a reduction of $100,000 for the expulsion program that we talked somewhat at length about. I, from day one, we've both been on the same page that this is not something we would want to spend, we want to have $100,000 expenditure for. As a result of that, we've done, Dr. Collins has done considerable amount of further research and investigation with the State Department of Ed, and I'm sure some of the other administrators as well, reviewing the guidance from the Department of Ed, and they're getting such a blowback from districts and superintendents that the language that originally was out in what, December or January, is, and you can do a better job.
It kept changing. One day was harsh, and then it would go back, and so you weren't really sure which one to believe, because first they said it was non-negotiable, you had to have this in, and it had to be X, Y, and Z, and then they backed off, and then they went on and again, and now the latest has been that they backed off and said that it has to look sort of like an alternate program.
So, and I will say, just from my perspective, Mr. Branda sent me probably 60 pages of information sometime in the beginning of March that I culled through and talked to Dr. Collins at length about whether or not the newer standards that the Department of Ed is coming out with actually mean we would need to do what we originally anticipated. At this point, the administration's comfortable that we don't need to do the original plan. We can get rid of that money, continue doing what we're doing, or slightly modify it and still be in compliance with the new state law unless, you know, that law gets revised down the road. Any further comments on that? Okay. I just want to skip to five because it's easier. There is anticipated breakage in the amount of $123,831. I'll go back to four.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to get the easy ones out of the way. Mr. Jacobowitz, can you explain why, and this is, breakage is the term that we use for public's knowledge, when someone leaves a position and we're filling that role. If someone is making $5,000 in that role, and we can bring someone new in for $3,000, there's $2,000 that you don't need in the budget at that point. That's what we call breakage. That is how we do our budget initially, and of course, our budget was initially done three months ago, so there is additional movement. So, Mr. Jacobowitz, can you?
Correct. So, there are additional retirements that were declared in the timeframe from now, or from January till now, and refinement clarity of some other personnel decisions. So, of the $123,000, basically calls down to two people on retirement program that are departing this year that were originally not scheduled, as well as a third person leaving early where we're just able to take the retirement increment portion of their salary back. So, we're within a few hundred dollars breaking even on that, so I will just be smoothing the rough edges off that. Assuming this is passed.
And I do want to add that the reason why this is such a very specific number is that there was a couple thousand dollars left over when I was trying to get together a list of things that got down to 3.43%, and that was tacked on to that amount. Mr. Sylvia?
Historically speaking, this number is rather low.
This is after we've already taken into account teachers who we already knew were retiring. So, this is after we passed our budget. So, this is three people who have, who are leaving their positions since we transmitted our budget to the council. Otherwise, that would have already been in our budget in the first place. Generally, I think pretty much every year I've been on the board, there's been probably one to two retirements after we transmit. Mr. Farisi is shaking his head, yes, absolutely. So, this is generally always something that we do at this stage, and that's part of the discussions with the town council, how can you get down to a lower number? Well, we have a couple of easy things. We can get rid of expulsion. We have some breakage coming in so we can get down to X number, and then past a certain level is where the other stuff comes in.
I still believe that, I understand it's reported individuals that says, "I'm retiring", and you can check it off and say, "Okay, it equals 123." But I still believe we've got, historically, we've had a lot more life events that have created a greater breakage.
But, so this isn't mid-year life events that we're talking about. This is simply teachers who are no longer going to be employed by us, and will be able to hire someone to fill that position at a much lower cost.
All right.
Because remember, when we, when this budget's built, it starts at zero, and when you build up the salaries for employees, you build it up based on who's going to be there for next year. If those people change in the time between when we transmit our budget and today, we then take into account the salary we're not paying.
I just think we have an opportunity to add a few more thousand, at least another $27,000 to that.
Based on what?
Based on historical evidence that we've had and trends over the years. I mean, we've had many individuals, even between now and our next beginning of the school year, there's...
Right. It is, and that's a valid point. It's very possible, very likely between now and day one of the school year, someone that we employ of the thousand employees will not be back, and will replace them at possibly a lower number. So, that's very, very possible and valid. We have a responsibility, however, to make sure we budget for what we have and what we expect to have happen. We can't forecast into the future and say, "We'll have another person retire, so we're not going to fund their salary entirely in our budget. We wouldn't be doing our state obligations."
I appreciate you. I appreciate the discussion, and I understand where the number came from. Thank you.
Okay. We'll jump back up to number four. This is listed as kindergarten tutors for full-time equivalents at $88,000. This is the one that I've had the most questions on, and Pam can attest to that because I've been emailing her nonstop about it for a few weeks. This is for interns that we pay, this is the first time I've known about this in my time on the board. When we have interns come in that are students in college, we pay the university for the privilege of having them come in. This is for tutors from the University of St. Joseph who we paid $88,000 to last year, and I should, I don't, I really still don't quite understand, so if you guys want to take that away.
Because he actually works in grade.
Thanks, Steve.
So, it's a master's degree program through the University of St. Joseph, and they work for us every day, six and a half hours a day, and then they do their coursework at night. It's usually for folks who are already certified teachers, who are now going to get their masters in a literacy program, so they were providing literacy intervention in our elementary schools. Last year, we had to make a very difficult decision because our kindergarten numbers were so high, to stop that program and then put that money, the $88,000, over to learning tutors to support the kindergarten classrooms because the class sizes were too high, and we didn't have enough money to add enough teachers to reduce the class size numbers. So, we all here, I think we shared that we would be supporting those high class sizes with learning tutors, and that's what we did this year. We're able, with the current structure of what we believe we'll have for this school year at the kindergarten level, to be able to manage it with our current workforce without the need for those learning tutors just in kindergarten.
Okay.
And it will eliminate both what we currently have, you know, for the intern positions.
But we didn't have those intern positions this year?
Right. Correct.
Okay.
That's where we got the money from, though. Last year, we eliminated the internship program, took that money, hired learning tutors at the kindergarten level only, and we will no longer have those kindergarten, only learning tutors for next year.
And I just want you to repeat, though. This is something that you believe we will be able to do similar work without them?
Yes.
So, where did the $88,000 get paid to?
So, what I'm understanding is, if we take, not this current year, but last year, we previously were paying $88,000 to St. Joseph's for four tutors, or a number of tutors.
Interns, literacy interns.
Interns who were in a master's program.
We were paying an educational institution money for their students to come teach here, and we weren't compensating these interns.
Part of their coursework.
They got compensated by the union. In all intern programs that have been in existence as long as I've been in Newington, whenever we had an agreement with the university, and previously, our intern program was with Quinnipiac, Bridgeport, and St. Joe's, and then it became more challenging to try to find, to locate interns. They weren't just applying to the universities. So, Mr. Farisi was able to work with Jill Mack at the time, I believe, at St. Joseph's, and so we tightened it up, and we had a really good intern program. My own daughter was in the program, so I can tell you what happens is, the interns don't get paid, but they get a tuition reduction, and at that time, they were getting, I believe, Steve, about $500 for books and materials. So, St. Joe's gave, sort of took what we were paying them for the interns and deferred it to the students to make it more attractive for students to take on their programs.
And so, instead of having that program in this current year, the administration needed learning tutors, and at some point asked us to...
Defer that money.
Defer them and hire learning tutors instead.
To help support large class sizes at the kindergarten level.
So, this cut would be getting rid of those four learning tutors. Mrs. Dros?
Okay, just trying to learn the budget. So, where was this $88,000 in this awesome blue binder?
In the learning tutor account, in the tutorial account salaries.
Tutorial account?
Lou, do you want to share exactly?
Certified salaries.
Microphone?
See, someone's got it.
It was in the certified salary account across the five big programs.
Remember, they are certified teachers, so they're masters programs, so we're getting them for $22,000 essentially.
Mr. Sylvia, another comment?
I'm speechless. All right. Lou, you just said $88,000 distributed equally across five accounts.
Correct.
Just like our elementary teachers are?
Yeah.
And so, if you, if you go back to Dr. Collins' budget presentation where he did it school by school, and it breaks it up into what those categories are, because that's the same question we always have, can we see it in a different way so those are whole people? And so, Dr. Collins' budget presentation from January breaks down each of those things, including tutors, at each school, so you see how many people there are and where they are.
So, across those five accounts, that $22,000 will probably equal what? About one-quarter of an FTE, or one-fifth of an FTE? I mean, $88,000 seems to be about the salary of a teacher.
It's four FTEs because it's four people. It doesn't depend on the salary.
It's four...
Interns.
Interns. But $88,000 is still equal to at least the average, or a little higher than the average FTE, certified FTE that we would hire.
Okay.
Okay? So, you don't need the four kindergarten tutors, right?
We are, we are saying that we are going to manage without them.
So, during our budget discussion...
Because we're losing the interns as well. Like, we lost the interns first.
During our budget discussions, we were causing classrooms to start to increase at other facilities. Where I'm coming from is, if I've got $88,000, I want a teacher.
So, that's not, so, so right now, we're not adding teachers in. We're maintaining, so this whole list is designed to do two priorities. One, in the top priority, not lose any classroom teachers that we have through attrition or through layoffs. The second priority is opening the STEM academies. Because of, and if people heard my comments on Monday night, because of what's going on with the Aerospace Academy, it allows us not to have any attrition through layoffs as well. So, this $88,000 has to come from somewhere.
All right, then I'd like to make the motion.
And the administrations, we're not making motions right now. We're discussing the motion that was on the, that was on the table right now, and this $88,000 for the tutors, the administration's gone back, looked at everything, as you repeatedly request them to do, and found something they think they can do without if they don't have the money to do it. That's what this represents.
If you would be able to guide me and direct me at the appropriate time to make a motion, I would appreciate it.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dros had some comments. Mr. Sylvia, that's the fifth time now you're going to start speaking without having the floor. Mrs. Dros has been waiting. I'm going to go to her.
Thank, my apologies.
So, where, again, just budget, you know, in the future, next year, when I'm looking at it, where would this look? Because it's part of the FTEs, where is it going to be reduced from?
It's in the 111 accounts across the five major categories. 112, 111?
Correct. These are not FTEs as our employees. You know, it's for individuals. It's really there to reflect that there are four individual interns positions, intern slots that are being affected by this motion. They are not in our FTE account.
That would be confusing because that's...
It says it on this list, but it wouldn't...
It's for people being...
So, where, again, I asked this question before, where is it? It's, because when I asked you, said it was on the FTEs and it was in...
No, it's not in the FTE. It's in the dollar amount in the 111 account. It is not in the FTE because they're not employees to us, to the district.
And what, under what beautiful tab? Do you know what the tab is called?
Five major programs. Math, reading, social studies, language arts, and science.
And that's the same thing with, that's the same distribution for each of our elementary school teachers, because they teach in every area?
I think as Mr. Schulman said, if you go back to my presentation, because they're all elementary, right? Okay. So, the four elementary schools, you'll see an amount associated with those people in there.
You said it was the five major...
No, no, no. In our, in our budget book. In Dr. Collins' budget presentation in January, he did it school by school, so we could see whole people instead of fifths of people throughout the book, and that broke it down into teachers, into tutors, into every category that we have, so you saw the exact number and the exact dollar amount at each of our elementary schools.
Josh, I'm not questioning that. I, all right, I see a disconnect between the presentation that Dr. Collins presented in the manner that you just described, and the manner in which I'm hearing them say, "Oh, the .2 FTE," or whatever number it is, "is in the dollars, but it's not in the certified position."
Right, and that was part of the budget presentation as well to describe...
That was not what was discussed during our budget when we went through this book.
Yes, it was.
They said that these positions are here. I don't see those .2s or whatever that was there.
Mr. Sylvia, that is, we talked about that in every single one of these categories, at least four different times. We talked about, in every year we've done this, we go into it, and Mrs. Dros, I'm pretty sure you asked at least two of the questions about, "How do the peak number of people match up to the dollar amounts?" And we went through, and they told us exactly who those people were, the numbers of FTEs, and who the dollar amounts were made up by, and we then directed the attention back to the presentation because that shows the whole person.
But it doesn't match, and that is the danger. That's why I wanted to make sure I said that, because it won't match, because of the way we have to do our budget and the way we were showing it during the presentation the first time we did it this way. Intentionally because the board wanted to see it that way. But it doesn't match. It'll all match up if you do, if you do the math. If you want to sit down and do the math.
You'll see $17,750 less in the 111 account in each of those five major categories. That's, that's where it shows up. You did them, is it 17, 750? Did I do it right? Okay. Dr. Braverman?
So, are there still tutors, just four less, or...
So are there still tutors, just four less, or not any?
No, so we won't have any literacy tutors now, which is, and I know they're being.
Not kindergarten, not specific to kindergarten.
But before that, we had literacy tutors, learning tutors, at the elementary level, right?
The tutors that will be eliminated will be those four that were specifically assigned to kindergarten only.
Right, but they came from the other.
They came, the money for those four tutors came from the money we used previously for the interns through St. Joseph's University. We couldn't include them as employees, we had to account for what we were paying for them, but they were really students of the University of St. Joseph's.
All right, thank you so much for that explanation. I'd like, I'm sorry, may I?
Dr. Braverman, were you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone else have their hand up? Sorry, Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you, I do apologize, I'm getting a little emotional. You mentioned that NPS believes that they can get managed without these four interns?
So, they aren't interns. We had to remove that program the previous year and defer the money, so we no longer, after last year, had literacy interns. We deferred that money to get four kindergarten learning tutors. So the four learning tutors that represent this $88,000 budget cut, we will work hard to manage without them, yes.
So will it benefit our students if the tutors were available to them?
Of course, but many things that we cut out of our budget would benefit the students. If we could hire 20 more tutors, or pay our tutors more so they stayed.
Or school psychologists, or.
Or a number of things that would benefit our students. We are, we're getting down to a number that, we're getting down to, this of all the other places money could come from, this was one of the things the administration was most comfortable with, which I think we need to respect that fact, since they're the ones managing the system.
And that's where I'm having my greatest level of discomfort, is there, eliminating teaching positions in lieu of things. And so for that regard, that's why I'm having this debate.
And I just want to be clear, those are four kindergarten tutors, who would have been next year, is it correct, that would have been for literacy interns from a master's program at St. Joseph's. They were already not going to be the kindergarten tutors.
Be it literacy, or be it a tutor, it is a teacher. And that's where my head is at, that's where I'm having difficulty articulating in an appropriate manner, that I don't want to cut that $88,000. I want to be able to provide the students with the literacy, literacy or tutor support that is necessary.
And the response would be, I completely agree with you, except to the extent that we have cut the things to the level that the administration doesn't feel if we cut further in any of those places, and we're already cutting a things, $20,000 of things tonight, for the third time, I think. If we cut further in those areas, is when they start feeling uncomfortable that we can provide what we need to provide with the staff that we have.
Okay, so Josh, I respectfully disagree with the administration's recommendation to cut the $88,000 out of teachers. And that's where I want to make my motions at the appropriate time. So, I understand, and I do appreciate the discussion, but my position is, I've got issues on number four, and I got issues on number nine. And I think I've got alternatives for us to discuss at the appropriate time, but I don't want any cuts in.
You certainly can, that's noted.
Teaching, and what needs, the needs of our students are, over things. And I've been harping about this for a long time, and I'm going to continue.
Thank you for your comments, and I certainly appreciate them and get them, and to that, I would only say, and I'm going to try not to be snarky about it, but we've laid off and lost teaching positions in your time on the board, and this isn't meant to be personal anyway, but this is by far the least burdensome type of cut that we've had at this table. And laying off four teachers last year, for example, because we didn't get enough money from the town council to retain the staff that we had, was a much different scenario than we're talking about right now. So I just want to, I want to put that on the table, that this is, of course, we never want to lose anything that will benefit our students, but this is at a much different level than it's been for the last three years. Dr. Braverman?
Is it possible that we can move this over to Central, and does it cost money for, there's a requirement for students to come and work in a school system?
Can I? So, Central doesn't have an internship program like this one, or like the one that Mrs. Maraca shared about the University of Bridgeport, or Quinnipiac, and some of the other schools. We could always investigate that. It generally does, however, come with a financial compensation to receive the interns for a specific amount of time throughout the week. I don't know what that would be, but we'll always investigate, and we'd love to investigate other opportunities. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Stam?
Just given the fact that we are making deep cuts, things will never equal bodies, and we need to be cognizant of that. And I, you know, I really respect the fact that this administration looks hard and deep at what they're doing, when they're doing it. And they're clearly telling us that this is not a wonderful thing, they're trying to look at this budget, and they're trying to maintain the full-time teaching staff. And that, and I respect that, and I just want, I just need to reiterate, things do not add up to the amounts of money that we need to cut, and staffing does, unfortunately.
Mrs. Dros? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on this list, which is, Mrs. Dros?
I just, I think some people are still confused about the interns, so can I just like say one little thing about, the import, the, and I agree completely with Steve, because for $88,000, we're getting four certified teachers, and that's, it's not four teachers that are, you know, interns from Central who can't be left alone with the kids, or, you know, or haven't had the training. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, and maybe when, you know, motions come up, that money might come back, but $88,000 for four certified teachers is just a bargain rate. So, I think that's the big difference, is other schools, they're not certified teachers who are coming to you. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay. The next item on the list is a reduction in maintenance of $200,000. The only way I can put this is that the state has decided to grant the town of Newington a million and a half dollars for the diesel release. It is expected that a large chunk of that will be coming back into the Newington Public School CIP account. As a result, I pressed the administration from $50,000 up to $200,000 as a cut to maintenance in order to alleviate the need to reduce classroom teachers, and allow us to be able to do what we are going to be able to do with the STEM academies. So, this was a level at which the administration felt they could handle the cut to the maintenance budget, knowing that there would be money in public school CIP at some time to be able to capture some of the bigger items that, you know, this would leave our budget in maintenance, I believe, $260,000 higher than it was in this current operating year, which is about 40 or so percent less than what we actually spent in 2016, 2017. So it's on the right track to get us back to what we need operationally in maintenance. And that's all I have on this. Any questions or comments on that? Mr. Sylvia?
All right, first off, congratulations and kudos, you got it to $200,000. All right, that's great. And I compliment you on that. I fully recognize that the maintenance needs of our facilities are greater, and we would love to have this $200,000. But I just want to thank you for taking it, working with the administration on this particular line item to get it to 200.
Further comments on this? And I do want to say, I tried to get it higher than 200, because it's easier to cut out of a large number that's kind of amorphous. I was met with incredible resistance at that point, and I think for valid reasons, and, you know, I don't necessarily feel comfortable going to that level that it's at here, but higher than that starts getting a little shaky, and, you know. Okay. Let's first talk about aerospace and biomedical academies before we jump into the psychologist and social worker. We are skipping number nine and going to number 11. Well, six, number six and eight are zero dollars, they were on previous lists, and they're just here for illustration, that those on other lists that did not meet any of our approval, probably, they were reductions in our teaching staff through attrition. Each one of those, number six, number eight, would have been $52,000. The first one would have moved our grade one at Reynolds to 23 kids, the second one at Patterson, grade two to 24 kids. Because of the changes in maintenance and the developments with the high school academies, we were able to increase the amount of the maintenance cut, decrease the amount of the second STEM position, and not have to lose any staff through attrition, any classroom teachers. Mrs. Guyan?
So just to be clear, those are, they're at zero because we're not losing that position?
Correct.
Okay, that's a little confusing when it's on the list of things to be reduced, but I appreciate that illustration for sure, but yeah, those are positions we've decided against, and that's why they're on, I mean, reductions we've decided against, that's why they're zero.
And the main reason why, and that's the main reason I was fighting to get maintenance up when we got the state grant money, it was very clear on this table how strongly the board felt that that should be the top priority, making sure we retain our classroom teachers, and the incredible numbers we're getting at the elementary level. So that's number six and number eight. So number 10, in the same fashion, the STEM position number one, the biomedical academy, remains in the budget, fully funded. The second position, the aerospace academy position, is a decrease of $76,630. It leaves $15,000 in the operating budget for a partial position, and the rationale behind it is fast developing, because as we know, the high school has been getting course selection back, they're starting to run simulations now, I assume, or, they still haven't run simulations for scheduling?
No, but we know approximately what we're going to be able to do, and what I've put together here is the academies that will be running, the courses that will be running next year, and the ones that will not as a result of this. And so there's only one copy, and it is a very rough draft, that's why I did not want to publish it. So if you want to take a look at those, those are the courses that we'll be running, we'll be able to run all of the courses in the biomedical academy, and some of the courses, the beginning courses in the aerospace, and then we will phase them in as we're able to get staff.
And so this is partially because of the enrollment for the aerospace courses from the student selection, that they just went through this month. So it didn't necessarily justify a whole position in aerospace, and that is possibly because of the fiasco from last year. The happy benefit of rolling this out in a phase is that you can save $76,000 right now, and that way, that $52,000 per teacher by attrition fills that in. So this was, this has all kind of been happening since Friday, and the administration's been trying to figure out what they can and can't do based on what the high school has. So the way that this will work, the idea right now, is that there is a current teacher at the high school who will teach, right?
We're still working that out, we've had, we have several changes in our academy program that will, personnel changes that have recently occurred.
Right.
So all of that is in the mix, so.
So one possible way is that there may be a teacher picking up an additional course and being paid at the union rate, once, if the union signs off on it, that's where that $15,000 would go potentially. And then there may be another teacher, teaching one less science course, and teaching aerospace course, and all of these plans are still rapidly developing, but the administration's confident that at this level, we will be able to open the medical academy fully and start phasing in the aerospace academy. Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So, I do have this number burned into my mind, that the STEM academies had 350 students that were interested in taking it.
Last year.
Year before. Last year?
Last.
So this year, I'm assuming on the medical side, that 175 have signed up?
Does anyone have the actual numbers?
I don't have the actual numbers, and because medical sciences is a full year, some of the courses are full year, it would, you would be duplicating if you counted them. Because it would be, let's say, a group of 20, but they're in both semesters, versus a single semester course that would have 20, and then another 20 for 40. So I would have to get that from the high school, what the requests were for medical sciences.
So we're no, so I'm trying to grasp, we had unbelievable amount of political overtures needing three, having 350 students wanting to take it last year, and we couldn't deliver, and $684,000 in bonding from the CIPs were, bonding's wrong, were, $684,000 from CIP funds were not allocated by the town council, therefore, we couldn't get our two STEM teachers, and we could not accommodate 350 students. Now I'm hearing that I need one STEM teacher for how many students, I don't know, and a partial aerospace teacher for how many students, I don't know. And I have a sneaky suspicion, it's not 350 students.
We know it's not 350. That's the first thing I said, is that this is partially based on the amount of students who were interested in taking the aerospace courses and signed up, because last year, as you remember, they all signed up for it, and then had their chairs taken from out under them. So it's unsurprising to me that there was less interest, because no one knows if the courses are actually going to run.
However, even if there were only 300, even if there were 350, we're only going to be able to offer, we're going to be able to offer the full gamut of the biomedical, but only a fraction of the aerospace. So let's say that there were 200 kids who signed up for aerospace, we're only going to be able to offer two sections. So you're talking 50 kids, I'm just using. Okay. So, that's a hypothetical, Dr. Collins, because you don't have the numbers. I mean, if I've got 200 students that want to take aerospace, that's a teacher, that's more than a teacher. We don't have that teacher.
So I will just clarify, this year, as Mr. Schulman alluded to, students were a little shy about registering for courses when it came to the academies. And that is because for our biomedical students, for two consecutive years, what they requested didn't come to fruition, and unfortunately, they had to take some, in some instances, courses that were really not of their interest as an elective, because this was going to be one of their electives. This year, we had 50 requests for the Intro to Engineering Design course. So that is why we're pretty confident, our confidence level of requests and actually acquiring the class runs in between 85 and 90% accuracy. Given those numbers, we would have enough students for two sections of this full-year course, Intro to Engineering Design. So I do know aerospace requests, I do not know medical sciences requests.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. The courses that are running are Medical Science 1, Medical Science 2. So that generates the .4 number? Thank you.
And I think it's worth recognition that we constantly ask the administration to figure out a different way to do things for less money. This is one way, and this is, seriously, this started on Friday, to try to figure out how to do this Friday of last week. So, I mean, truly, this is incredibly fast-moving, they're, at this stage, they're really confident that this will work out well. And then the plan would be next year, hopefully, the interest increases further, and it will justify filling out that to a full-time position to run the additional courses that we would offer. Dr. Braverman? Microphone.
Can we put our students on the hot seat a little bit and ask if they know about biomedical or the?
Any insight, Mr. Plorg?
I completely agree with what everything, that what everything is, that's not how to speak. I completely agree with everything that has been said. I know a lot of students have been very shy, very shaky, to register for these classes because of the experiences that they've had previously. So, in that sense, I can sense that in the school, and that a lot of students didn't sign up for the courses for those reasons. However, I know that there were, there was a renewed sense of optimism after seeing the actual facility, when the year opened up, many students felt like, well, if this facility is here, they're not just going to completely forget about it, we're going to be able to finally take these courses at some point. forget about it, we're going to be able to finally take these courses at some point. So many of them did end up signing up because of that optimism. So yes, if that helps you in anything, yeah.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Matt. Any further discussion on that? In my eyes, it's kind of, it's kind of a good thing that there's less interest right now in aerospace because it avoids additional cuts from us. And we'll be full-fledged hopefully the year after and it'll be a great program. The last thing on this list is not funding the new psychologist and social worker at the middle level and that's $174,040. Not my first choice, but the money's not there. Mrs. Dros?
So I, I know that, you know, I've had a conversation with Mr. Sylvia, who's helping me through this process. I, I cringe at this and I've said this before, we constantly, in this, I think it's the country, I don't think, it's just Newington, we really just, we just forget about the middle schools. And our middle school students need this work so much, I, I just can't stress that enough. I, I did present to you some ideas, I didn't hear back why they were naysaid by the administration. I just think we need to look and see if we can come up with at least one of those in some of the suggestions that I had sent to you. I'm very saddened that I got no response as to why, that was a no. And again, it's about getting people in there. We need those social workers. I mean, social worker, psychologist, these kids need it. Seeing, seeing kids in this town, I just, in all towns, just, I'm just sad by that.
I certainly don't disagree with you. It is .25%. And I, I just didn't see how it was possible. And to your point about your suggestions, this is now going to be the time to, we can put that out there and I think it's important to talk about in public that you have suggestions. And I sought response from the administration and it was, it was pretty clear that those were things that they just didn't feel, they thought would be taking more away from the kids. And that is, $175,000 is not a small amount of money. And Mr. Sylvia, did you have something?
So during the budget session, I committed, Mrs. Guyan, for bringing up and making a very important motion to add this in. And if anything, it is a necessary service to our students. And if anything, of anything, it's more important than anything that is being asked for by this administration. And so along the lines of what Ms. Dros had suggested, I think is more than sufficient to pay for these roles. Or we could also take it out of the transportation department, or we can take it out of the contracted services for supporting copiers, all right? Or supporting wellness equipment, or any other contracted service that we have that does maintenance activities on things. This is a necessary service, this is a support mechanism. And I now have to commend Ms. Maraca. When I attended that presentation at the curriculum, I did not understand the gap. The gap exists, the gap must be closed and it would be a dereliction of my duty to this board of not asking, heck, demanding that this role be filled and that these two social, the psychologists and the social worker are needed at the middle school level. So I can tell you right off the bat, I will not be supporting these suggestions when, if it came to a vote. Not when we're taking things over teachers or the support. So, you know, I, I understand Ms. Stam's position on this much more clearly after Ms. Maraca's presentation. And it's emotional. So I, I can't support that recommendation. I certainly can't support eliminating teachers at the kindergarten, whatever role they play.
And so at this point? At this point, I have to ask where $260,000 is coming from then?
Oh.
Because?
Well, okay.
Please, what are, what are your suggestions for where?
Do you want me to wait?
What are your suggestions?
So my suggestions are?
Because so far I've heard transportation, which were mandated to do.
Account 2700, line item 112.
What is that?
That's transportation. And account 2210.
Who looks that?
Which is curriculum.
Curriculum.
112 also.
Okay. So those are the salary accounts. So transportation salaries, and please correct me if I'm wrong, those are our bus drivers?
No, that's the administrative level.
It's, it's both.
It's both. It's something that has to do with those salaries, yes. I don't care how it's taken out.
Okay. And curriculum is paying our teachers to write the curriculum? Ms. Maraca, can you speak on that?
There, well, the curriculum accounts have, I think what I explained during the budget workshop session, is there are areas for writing curriculum and then there are contracted services. And those all fall under the same 500 categories. So curriculum.
This is 112, they're talking about taking out a 112, it's Debbie.
112 is salaries.
Non-certified salaries.
That is our curriculum office single secretary. Oh, plus Tom, Patrick and Kate. So again, the curriculum office in some instances takes on more than just curriculum because it's a place where sort of some of the functions of the district work. So that is the secretary, the power school manager and the student data systems manager, as well as then the communications, the digital content communication specialist, who really works directly for Dr. Collins, but it is a district service. So she began working in the curriculum office and is, and so we kept that salary there. So her salary could move anywhere else, but it really is most convenient to work in, out of the curriculum office. So it's those four salaries.
Mrs. Dros?
So this is my concern from, from day one of this budget process. Understanding this budget is, it's ridiculous, it's so difficult to understand. And when we were going through the budget process, and so I talked to Mr. Sylvia about this and I said, and this was one of my suggestions also to Mr. Schulman, when, when we went through it originally, one of those line items, and I threw my, Mr. Sylvia has my budget page, but one of the line items you had said was for curriculum writing only.
Yes.
So what line is that?
599.
So, okay, so it's $148,000. How much of that is the NGGS?
That I, I don't have my budget in front of me, so I can't explain that to you. But you have to remember in that, also in 599, our services the board pays for the online learning system called Odysseyware, that is within that budget, it's contracted service. We pay for Power School, which is our student information system, which is 75 or 74,000 dollars.
My note says $80,000 Power School, $62,000 curriculum writing?
Yes, correct. And then in there is Odysseyware as well.
That's, that's the amount of curriculum writing for teachers?
So that, so this is where like, you know, as, as Josh had said, give us some ideas, I went back to my notes and my notes were that this was curriculum writing and I almost had a heart attack that the district spent that much money on it. But even if we said 60,000, would it be the end of the world to take a year off from curriculum writing? And I've, I have spoken to teachers in the district who said, if the curriculum needed to be tweaked, we could do that during a PD Tuesday, you know, teacher Tuesday. I'm just, I'm so passionate about the fact that we need to get those psychologists in. Having a kid get services seems so much more important than writing curriculum for a year. And I could be wrong and I'm just speaking like a teacher and I'm speaking like a mom, but it just seems like that's a, a place that doesn't go straight to the kids. And I know that sounds ironic considering it's curriculum, but.
So if you, we talk about variances because that's one of the other issues that comes up at this table all the time, and why so many variances? If you take a look at your budget and things, we have year after year after year, cut so much out of things that we are left, we are left with no other choice but to take from other areas because you can't run a district without things. You try to give teachers notebooks and know, it has to come from somewhere. So what we'll do is we will short curriculum or we will short, you know, not hire a secretary or whatever to get money for those things at the end of the year. And that's when we do those purchases because they have to be purchased. You can't go without books. And if you look at, if you look at the dollar amounts associated by individual departments, to think that you're running a math department, K-12, what is it, $11,000 or something like that? That's ridiculous. That's, you know, if we budgeted appropriately for those things, then we wouldn't have to do those kinds of things. And then you could say, yeah, maybe we, we could take a year off, but it's likely a lot of that money will go somewhere else anyway.
Go ahead, Steve.
And I just wanted to share from, just, my mind is always in the staffing realm. So just from a staffing perspective, that $66,000 or 60,000, however much it is, when deferred over to salaries now becomes a, an item that you have to fund every year. It's a salary you must fund every year. So that would never go back to curriculum unless somewhere else we found it, you know what I mean? So, okay.
So I shared the West Hartford budget with you and I've shared, I've seen other budgets and they're like, it is this, this budget like blows my mind. Living in the industry, I've been in the industry for many, many years, I look at this and I seriously go, I have no idea. Like this is like my, how my husbandbook keeps our checking account, I'm like, where'd you spend our money? I have no idea. Sorry, honey.
Right. And, but that is, and we, if you think back, and I know Steve had your page for a minute, I don't know if you have it back, but we, when we go through for those two nights on the workshop and it may be easier just to have an entire list broken out and maybe we can talk about that for next budget year, and I floated that idea briefly and Dr. Collins was so stressed out about the presentation and what bus picture to use. Those are the questions we ask about every single line item, what exactly is in that line item? When we got that list of contracted services for technology, we got every single thing, every, every single program. So those are the questions we ask, which is why I had a note of 80,000 Power School, $62,000 curriculum writing, because we do have that chance and we, we do spend so much time talking about it and it may be easier to have it for reflection, line by line, you know?
But we also have to be careful because in 1970, the town council was, when the council was, I'm going to explain why. So bear with me, 1970, we still, this town charter still exists. So in 1966, when the town council was formed and the town charter was formed, we are required to follow the format of the town of Newington. So we can't just go off and change on our own and, because what your budget does right now is it matches with, with the town council. If you just went off and did anything, you can't. The town charter says you can't do that, you have to follow what the.
And I just want to hit back on what Mr. Feresi said, because it's an important concept for how we do the budgeting. So if we take 60 grand out of curriculum and move it into salary this year, that salary of that person we hire continues next year, but now we have $0 in curriculum writing. So if we want to actually do curriculum writing, we have to add in $60,000 back. So it winds up being an impossibility. Once you cut that thing, to get it back is very hard to do when every single year we're.
I'm so sorry, you explained it better.
Mrs.?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, do you have something further?
No, I just, I, I, I agree with you and I have like the Power School 80,000 when we went through it. So I, it was the 205,000 that I had written down along those lines, that that was curriculum writing, which again, you can understand why I'd be like, what the heck?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I apologize, I didn't, I didn't look back in my budget book before sending out and getting back response and it's been a little crazy, I apologize for that, but I would have had a better answer for you had I looked in my book. Mrs. Stam?
I have a couple of comments and I, I want to do it in the right order. Presentation wise, I, I had the same kind of issues when I first came on the board. It's much better now, there's more clarity and like all those extra things we asked for this year was, was much more helpful. And I understand where you're coming from with that. I, I just want to share my frustration and actually I do want to appreciate the fact that you're supporting the psychologist, social worker, which I was, you know, always on board for whenever I got on the board because that was really priority for me because I know how vital that is. I, and the essence is, we're in tough times. My frustration is the support of the last two years of a below 1% budget, that's why we're where we are right now and that's why we can't go forward with that. Because I'm, I'm sharing my.
Yes, I am.
My opinion and I'm going to share it. You share yours all the time and I'm sharing mine. If we didn't have what we had the last two years, we'd be in a better place. We're not. And I still believe that this administration is doing their best they can. Do I want that social worker and do I want that psychologist more so the social worker than anything? I do. I've been wanting it for three years now. But where's it going to come from?
Dr. Braverman?
So, Mr. Feresi, what is the reliability of the number of teachers who say they're retiring now who really do? Or do more retire later that we find breakage in the summer?
So I think like what was mentioned before, we generally have one or two that have come up traditionally. We can't guarantee that between now and summertime, but we, we do. I think the reliability of those who have informed us that they're retiring and truly will retire by the end of the school year is very high. You know, I would never say anything is 100%, but I think it's right close to there. So that would, you know. So I, I think the point you're trying to make is that if a couple of teachers retire, could you fund a social worker?
Right.
And so that's, that's kind of the age-old question, it's, it's possible.
It depends.
I'm sure it's something that's on the top of the mind of the administration and I think that we would all feel very strongly that if that opportunity arose, we should talk about it as a board because we all want to be on the same page that we're not just loosey-goosey after the budget is passed, oh, by the way, we got those positions we say we couldn't afford because it involves some, some consternation, some decision-making if that's something the board wants to do with, with that type of thing.
So perhaps we need a priority list of if we find money, this comes in?
I think it's pretty clear.
Okay.
I do. Mr. Plord?
I have a question. What if you were to eliminate the school psychologist and not the social worker or the social worker and not the school psychologist? What would those numbers be and how would that affect?
Right, so essentially, essentially half, it's a little more for the psychologist than the social worker, but essentially half.
So is that something that is, because, you know, I happen to, I, I agree with, with Mr. Sylvia and Ms. Dros in that, you know, and, and I agree with everybody, I don't think this is something that's, you know, we just don't want the psychologist, that's not, that's not it at all. It's, you know, we can't have the psychologist if we want to make these hard decisions. But, you know, in middle school, you know, the, these students are at a time when they really need that type of support and you all know that. So if it's possible to have one and, you know, not the other in order to cut some type of cost, but also still maintain that safety net in some aspect, if that's something that's possible, you know, I think that'd be a great.
And it's important to remember, I just don't want anybody to get hung up tonight on thinking that this is absolutely final. I mean, you have to get down to a dollar amount tonight. If for some reason, we have 17 more people resign or whatever, we're able to accumulate enough breakage, or, you know, you're being funny, but you know what I mean? And we are able to accumulate enough money or enough breakage to hire a social worker, we, you can still do that. So it's not, that doesn't mean you're saying no to it forever, but right now you don't have the money to do it and you have to get down to a certain point.
And, and that's the frustration of the fluidity of our budget process every single Mrs. Guyan, Mrs. Stam, Mrs. Dros?
As you can imagine, this is a very hard one for me. I strongly believe in the need for both of those people to be added. When I look at what we have on the list and what the, I mean, the administration knows how the district works, the ins and outs of it and what the needs are of our students and how to best address those needs. So although it is devastating for me to see this on the list of things we are not moving forward right now, or that we potentially will not be moving forward right now, I do trust in our administration to be thinking about ways to best service our students. And if they feel like that's an area where we can't go right now, I can certainly respect that. I hope that, and even if there's 17 teachers that were to retire, we would still have to probably refill those positions, you know, that's.
Let's say that 80 kids moved out of the district.
Okay, that's different.
All right. And you didn't, it hasn't been trending that way, but let's say it does. And you don't need to replace one of those elementary teachers and now you have a position available that you may want to say, let's get a social worker.
Oh, I would.
Well, it's, okay, right. So you may do that later, but I'm. So you may do that later, but I'm, what I'm saying is not final tonight, so go, I don't want you to worry, but I mean, you can't do it right now, though. You just don't have the money.
So we're hitting our snapshot in time. Right now, the amount of teachers that we have at the classroom level, the support staff, the items in the budget, that's the snapshot for tonight. You have anything further?
Yeah, that's, that is really hard for me, but I trust the administration to understand the inner workings of the school system to, where they feel like it is appropriate or not appropriate to, to look at these cuts, I will trust that.
Mrs. Stam?
And I just, I don't have my information in front of me. We have two social workers at the high school. Did we entertain being able to share one at the middle schools, or is that, are the numbers at the high school much too high to do that?
What we have to recognize is that at the high school level, the enrollment is that of both middle schools combined. So if we did remove one, we would cause a hole in the services that they have. And there's only one school psychologist rather than two, which is what you would expect.
Mrs. Droes?
I wasn't re-raising my hand, I was just scratching it.
But you, it was raised earlier.
It was. So I, I know Mr. Ferisi hates when I say this, but I'm going to say it anyways. I would propose that I would be more comfortable raising a either grade one or grade two class size and adding at least one social worker, just share. I know that's a lot of kids at that age, but we would be able to service just so many more kids' needs at the middle school. So that's just my opinion, but it's just my opinion, so.
And so, and, and here's the thing, if six kids at one grade level in a school leave or don't re-register or, or whatever, then that may be a possibility. Tonight is about getting down to what we need to have based on the information we have on April 18th. That information can change wildly between now and the end of August. So, you know, it's, it's hard to say for, for sure. Mr. Ferisi?
I would just like to go on the record that I don't hate that you share that at all. I actually appreciate it. And I think my colleagues around the table would tell you that I admirably argue with them about this same topic. And in respect to both sides, I think the other volatility to the contrary point of what Mr. Scholman shared is that we also, and we've seen this at Anna Reynolds, we receive six more students in those first grade classrooms, which then takes it from 23 to 25s. And again, correct, that may or may not be a variance that's acceptable to everyone, but it does get to be quite heavy. And, and so I would call it two very high priorities and, and difficult decision.
And, and, and I will also say, and Dr. Collins and I had this discussion today, actually, and said this wouldn't come up at tonight's meeting, but of course, this is exactly what we're talking about, that that is exactly what they're looking at. Is it, is it possible to not replace one of the retiring teachers somewhere in order to get a social worker? And I think, you know, that's, that's the discussion the administration's certainly going to continue having. I know it's not a great answer for tonight, and it, and it certainly seems incredibly wishy washy to any public listening in, but those are the realities of, optimistic, yeah, thanks, Mrs. Maraca. Those are realities of what they're doing every day between now and, and having set class sizes. So at this point, the recommendation is not to reduce one of the classroom teachers for a social worker based on the numbers that they have right now. If registration changes, then that analysis can certainly change. And I expect we would get a, an email from Dr. Collins saying, we have an opportunity. Would you like to discuss this with the board and move forward on that?
Because not only was your, your intent heard, it was, it was shared, your concern, but middle level social workers. So we do share the same concern. The problem is, we, where are we going to get the money? And so those are the things we're hashing around right now. And as of April 18th, 2018, we, we can't pull it off. But like I said, it's not, it's not over.
Mr. Sylvia?
It needs to be said, simply put, these, these social workers are necessary. I would ask for the administration to review the, their numbers again, quickly, or as fast as they have. To Ms. Stam, I apologize, you are entitled to your opinion, and I apologize for being disruptive. But we've, we've experienced unfortunate management of our existing year budget that has caused us to lose all of our PSCIP funds and tackle others. And, and I am still struggling with the lack of commitment and being wishy washy optimistic. I want to have commitment to these psychologists and social workers. I want the teachers. I want the services to the students over things. And I know I'm oversimplifying it, but the things can always be repaired, and they can be shown to the town as necessary to be addressed either under the Anna Reynolds Building Fund or any other types of funding that comes up or bonding issues in the future. But for us to walk away and not make a commitment to the students is deeply disturbing to me. And, and I can't support this recommendation.
I think you hit the nail on the head, though, and that is an incredible oversimplification of a $72 million budget.
If I can give you some numbers that you asked for with regard to things. From the teachers' requests, I reduced $5 million in things. The, the, then an additional $637,000 in things was reduced. Then an additional $404,000 was reduced. And now another $400,000 in things. So, so there, there are no things left.
Contracted services for copier machines. Contracted services for-
Those are contracted services. Contracted services.
Services. Your warranties and making sure that you can call a technician on the whim, and it's covered by a warranty. That's a contracted service that's in the budget.
Yes, it needs to be there.
We don't need it. We don't need it. And I know that she's going to throw something at me.
So I got the look from, from Dr. Collins, and Steve, I adore you, and we are on the same page on everything except for copiers. As, as, and I'm going to tell you a little anecdote. So today I made, I had a pile of copies. I was going to go in at 6:00 AM to make them, because I wanted to get to the copier before it broke. And I have a meeting at 7:00 AM tomorrow. And I got an email when I got home that I had left my copies in someone else's room. I'm like, ah. So copiers are the best way to make teachers mad. And my goal is to keep teacher morale up. So I, I do agree that the copiers need to have a contract, because it's nice when they break and the next day they're fixed. And that only happens with that service. I support everything else you say, though.
Okay, so, so here's, here's where we are at this point. We've discussed this list, we've discussed other suggestions. In, in my opinion, this is as good as we're going to get tonight. And, and I, again, I, I want to call your attention to the differences in what we're talking about this evening as opposed to the last two years. And I know, Ms. Droes, that you can't recall what we've done the last two years, because you weren't here, but you were aware of what happened. This is an incredibly different conversation that, than we've had in the past couple of years. It was my hope that we were going to come in here happy, that we weren't losing any classroom teachers at this point by attrition, and we were opening both academies, although one is being phased in. That's an incredible accomplishment. And I think in large part due to the fact that we cut everything we thought we could at the time before we transferred it over to the town council. And I think they respected the fact that we got rid of a lot of the things initially. We, we went in there with a budget. At 3.43%, that's, that's 1.8% of new money. Had we been fully funded last year, this would be a 1.8% budget. And to be able to accomplish a 1.8% budget with no loss of teachers through attrition and opening one and a half academies is, is, is somewhat of a miracle. And, you know, so that's where I stand on this. What I would ask is if anyone is still opposed to this list as it's been presented, if the majority of people are in favor of the list, I would like to just vote on the motion, pass it as is, and, and then we can move on. And if there are any changes of significance, the administration knows where our priorities are and will tell us what opportunities they have when they come up, so we can come back and discuss if that's what we want to do. So I'm just looking for a pulse of the room, if people are in support of this list, and obviously we have to support the motion at some point, because we have to get down tonight. But, Dr. Braverman?
Can we use health benefits money for kindergarten tutors? Why not?
I think the program starts before-
You can't use, it's one-time money. So you, it has to be in the budget. You can't, those are for only one-time purchase, health benefits money.
Right, but these aren't continuing-
But that's what we got. Well, yeah, they are. They would be every year.
But not the same people necessarily?
Correct.
For tutors?
Repet, same positions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, maybe we do it every year.
But right now, we're saying we're, we would prefer to do without them unless class sizes got up again. Remember, our kindergarten classes were extremely high this year, which is why we, we put those, those in there, because they needed the extra support. They're back down to normal so far, although some of the schools are creeping up. So it looks like we won't, I don't think we'll need the extra, it was nice to have, that was a nice to have thing. But, but we haven't typically had it in the past.
Right. But the, the way we budget may no longer, we may no longer be able to budget that way for things, and we may have to use health benefits money for people.
And so the, the only caution, however, is that it, right now, it looks like our health benefits number is pretty low at like $300,000 potentially. We know that our special ed costs are likely to overrun what we have in our operating budgets. That would be the first priority for where that money came from, and difficult to count on having people with money that hasn't come in yet. But your point's certainly-
Well, for temporary people that have no expectation of a continuing appointment, it might work to use health benefits money, and that's in the country.
But if you have to lay them off, then you have to pay unemployment and all of that. So there's, so I always say, you know, people always say, why do you buy toner cartridges when you can hire a teacher? Well, because the toner cartridges don't get sick. I don't have to replace them if they, you know what I mean? It's a silly example. But, I mean, that's why the, the number one rule is you never use one-time money for recurring expenses, which is exactly what we've done for the past two years and got us into this matter.
Right. Mr. Vassell, any thoughts?
I really appreciate the discussion tonight. I know the time has been tedious, and I, we're all kind of up here. I do fully support the psychologist and social worker. But I also fully realize that we need to get our budget to where it needs to be so that we can move on. I would really hope that the administration and all the things that come together, that those, the school psychologist and the middle school social worker are the top priority of everyone on the board, so that when that money, if that money, whatever happens, that we can get those in there that we do. But that's kind of where I'm coming from. I, I will support this with the understanding that, you know, the first position that's filled will be one of the middle school positions.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Mr. Sylvia?
Again, I can't support this without the commitment towards the psychologist, the social worker, and the tutors. Thanks.
Okay. Mrs. Stam?
I just want to-
My goodness. Based on the last couple of years' history, I'm pleased with the allocation we were given to, you know, to work with this year. And pleased with the fact that we don't have to reduce some full-time teachers. And I think we all know we're on this table, and really disappointed in the fact that we're not at this point able to hire the social worker or psychologist. But truly, this, I want to reiterate what Paul said, I do think that that should be our priority, and would hope that that could be put back in our proposal soon.
Mrs. Guyan?
Pretty much the same thing. This is a very different conversation than we've had in the past. We're very disappointed about not being able to add something in right now. And in the last couple of years, we've been talking about taking people out. So this is a much better place to be, and it is hard for me to support this with, without putting those positions in, but I understand where we are and that, I also under, I think it's pretty clear that that's a, a big priority for everybody here. So I know the administration will work towards making that happen for our students. So I will absolutely support this.
Anyone else have anything to add before we vote? Mr. Tufel?
Yes, I support somewhat of the bill, the motion. I believe that the chance arises where the money is available, I think it should be one of our top priorities. And it's very, very important for these middle school kids to get the services they need.
Absolutely. You don't have to. I, I, I do. And, you know, this is, I just, you know, I, I think we've, we've, we've all said it all, you know, I, I hope that all of you do realize that this is much better than it's been. And, and in the event there is an opportunity where we don't need one of the classroom teachers that's retiring, for instance, the only thing we need to make sure is that we all are aware of that, and we all publicize that it's not just found money somewhere, that there are intentional decisions made that, that allow that to happen. And that's one of the most difficult concepts for anyone, even us around this table, to understand sometimes. So with that, I will remind everyone, the motion that was made was simply to reduce the budget for 2018, 19 by $806,501. We are obligated to do that. Certainly understand if people want to vote no because of the list that the administration's going to work off of to reduce it. And with that, all in favor of the motion to reduce the budget? Aye. All opposed? The motion passes six to two. Number four on our new business, and I know there is some confusion in the community, and I meant to say something this, at the beginning of the meeting about this, this is a just-in-case item. Contractually, if we were to send out non-renewal notices to teachers, that has to happen by May 1st. Today is our last meeting to do so. Because we didn't know what the town council was planning on doing, although we were all obviously optimistic, they would fund us at a similar level to what we actually got. We had to put this on the agenda just in case so that we were able to discuss it tonight if need be. Fortunately, that is not something that we need to discuss, although we have done it three, the past three years. So, you know, there's going to be a lot of teachers who are in their fourth year of teaching this year who will be very pleased finally in their career in Newington not to receive one. And I hope that's how it remains moving forward for us around this board. So that is not something we need to talk about. Again, for anyone listening in, there is no non-renewal of non-tenure teachers, there are no layoffs at all. So that is very good news. We are now on to item G on our agenda, which is the superintendent of schools report. Dr. Collins?
I think, I think I said it all. But I do want to share with you, it's, it's, it is a top priority of ours as well. We, we realize how great of a need there is out there. We just, as of April 18th, can't afford it. But the first opportunity we get, if there is any further breakage or any, anything else, we, that's the first place we're going. So we are having those discussions now. But remember, we got a lot of stuff going on with, with STEM and everything else. So we've got a lot of moving parts. So we, we fully get that, we understand, and we support it. But I just want to reiterate that, I want to do it on camera, because if I do come to, come to you and say that I have the ability to hire a social worker, there are going to be people who are going to say, where did he get the money? I thought he didn't have the money. As of April 18th, I don't. If things happen over the course of time, if life events, as Mr. Sylvia calls them, occur, and we're able to accumulate in such a way that we can use that money as, you know, recurring, that's the first place we're going to go, because it is the greatest need that we have. Okay? So that's one of the things I wanted to share with you. As far as my superintendent's report, there are a couple of important items on there. Aside from the, as you know, Debbie's out, and she is the only secretary in the curriculum office, and despite that, I mean, they got a lot of stuff going on. And despite all of the other issues, all of the other drama and everything else that has taken place, the district has still been functioning. And we have, in large part, isolated our classrooms from all of the drama, if you will. Though our district data team is still functioning effectively, we're still being driven by data, we're still, all of the good things are still going on. I did want to point out, and I should probably let Mr. Ferisi share this with you about it. his experience at the job fair. Matter of fact, I think I will in just a minute. I just want to draw your attention to two quick numbers. I'm not going to bore you with the entire enrollment report, but there are two important numbers. The out-of-district number that I talk about all the time, you'll notice, is down by four. So we were able to do a couple of things between the BCBA, we had some kids, you know, shifts in kids, reduce that by four, and that, those are big dollars you're talking about, four kids. But, look, two down, and you have 76 preschool kids. Seventy-six. We have projected 57. So we're taking care of it next year, but those are numbers that we have to always be cognizant of. Okay? So enough of the bad news. I'm going to let Mr. Freese share his experience with you with regard to how we're still viewed in the state, with regard to employment in the Newington Development Schools.
Sure, so I had the good opportunity to go to the Yukon Recruitment Fair and the crack minority recruitment teacher fair, and had both fairs. We had lines of students just so eager to hear about our school district and see some of the anticipated openings. We do know that we have some areas, obviously, in science that we need to fill, and mathematics with the academies, and such outstanding young student educators coming out of their programs at both places. But again, when you, I got to walk away for a little bit because I had Principal Dias with me, one of our math coordinators, Sue LaJoy, with me as well, and Kim Davis, and I got to step away and just watch what was happening, and you could see around this whole big venue that our district had the longest line of teacher candidates just waiting to hear about what we had to offer and wanting to know more, and so interested in coming here in Newington. So I think we're very attractive to educators. I feel very good about that, and I feel like if we can continue to provide the opportunities that we will continue to attract and retain quality educators here for our students. So it was an exciting opportunity.
That's great. Anything further, Dr. Collins, in your report? Okay, any questions? Mrs. Stam?
I just want to go back in history, because looking at the out-of-district placements, because I know that at the beginning of the year, we were excited because we had 49, and then, then we had this fifth, we went up to 54, and I was, we weren't, I wasn't aware that we had children in the wings. So now we are down to 46. Are we going to keep at that 46, or is there potential with, no, but-
Oh, we have such potential.
Who's in the wing, like, but are you going to come back next, in two weeks, and tell me that this number is back up to 54?
In two weeks, hopefully not, but I will. It's going to go back up, we know that. There are definitely kids in the wings. But it was good news that that number dropped, that we were able to bring it down, otherwise it would be up or higher.
So my question is, when you have those kids in the wings, what are you doing to maintain them now, and what changes?
Right, so a BCBA is a big, big help. So by getting a handle on some of the behaviors and being able to bring back some of the kids who are outplaced for that reason, you save money. So keeping that number as low as possible and keeping kids in their own home district is-
Right, I just, I think, I just, I bring up the conversation just so that we're aware that, because I don't know whether people understand that, like, they're like, "Wait, we were down, and now, like, without notice, we're up," and I just want people to understand that that's great, that we're 40, you know, we're at 46 now, but we could be up to 50 in two weeks or three weeks.
Yes.
I just think that conversation needs to be continued so it's not forgotten.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So, Dr. Collins, how many students can we bring back if we increased our behavioral support?
If there were only, just to stop being outplaced due to behavior, all of them. But unfortunately, that's not, that's not why most of them are.
Well, that's the purpose of my question. So how many do we have that are of this 46 that we could bring back?
We brought back four.
Four addition- I think the question is, are there any addition, if we were to be able to replicate the same thing, are there additional students that are outplaced now that could be brought back in?
So let me give you an example. We had, a couple of years ago, we put in an autism program, Eddie Green, and we brought back, was it four kids? Six kids?
Four or six.
Four or six? So that was for autistic students. This one was for behavioral. So there are other students who are outplaced for many other different reasons that we really can't justify.
And this may be a better question for, is it Alexandra?
Ms. Guglioso, Marylanda. This may be a better question to field, and maybe we can get a written response after the meeting for you from Ms. Guglioso about, are there other programs that are currently under inspection to try to bring students back in-house, which I'm sure there are, but it may be more appropriate to have a formal-
Right.
-response on that, because it is a valid question. What other programs can we do to keep them in and keep the huge cost from arising?
Right, I mean, so the thought that's going through my mind is a simple CBA, right? If there's four students that appear to have an opportunity, and their outplacement cost to us are $300,000.
Bring them back in for 100, you have your social workers.
Whenever we reach that threshold, that's what we do.
But we don't have those numbers available, do we?
We do. Sure we do. We, that's how we make these decisions.
Mrs. Stam?
All right. How can those numbers be presented to us, so that we understand?
That's what I was just, it's probably better for a formal report from the person in charge of this specific function to talk about, because there might be right now one student that fits something we could do in-house, but the cost benefit wouldn't be there yet. But if there were three others that were also in the same position, then it might make sense, and I think we've had at least three times in my time on the board that exact thing happen. Mrs. Stam?
I just want to reiterate that. I know this is not a simple task to bring children back. It's, there's steps that have to take place, you have to have the support in place, and yes, we do have BCBA support, but we have BCA support, enough to support who, what the district has right now. In order, you probably would need to increase the BCBA support, and that just means hiring another body, and so, and we want a social worker and people-
But Cindy, if I spend $75,000 more for a BCBA, and I'm saving $300,000, I now have a net $225,000, and guess where I need to spend $225,000?
I just want to clarify for myself. The conversation is brought up because that's just something I'm very interested in. I want everyone at this table to understand that I'm aware of the roadblocks that prevent that, what we need, what you, and I agree with you, because I've done that. We've opened an autism program, we save money, but the money has to be initially there before even some of the kids come back, because you have to have the program and the teacher and the support staff to have the program before you can say, "I'm pulling them back." So it's valid, I agree with you, but we have to put the initial money out there to start the program, to have those services in place, before we can start bringing the kids back. So we just need to know that, and we clearly tonight discussed the fact that we don't have money for our social worker, and you were clearly, if we are bringing some of these children back, we would need a psychologist, we would need a social worker to support those programs, so it's all encompassing. So I just didn't want my comment to make it sound like it was an easy, simple thing, because it's really not, and I agree with you. In-house program is the best, but also you need to realize there are children out there that we're never going to bring back because their disability and their severity of their behaviors are just too difficult for a child to, or other children to have to, to deal with in the buildings.
And we are currently, to give you an example, we're looking at a program, and I want to say the cost is $296,000? $280,000. And so we're looking to see if there's any merit to, and how many kids we can bring back, and if it will warrant a cost benefit to us. We haven't reached that level yet.
Mrs. Guyan?
Just to comment on the report that we're asking for from Ms. Guglioso, is that for privacy purposes, I wonder how much she can really share?
She can give you broad, she can't obviously share any names or any particular-
Well, even specifics on cases, I think it would be-
Anything would even lead you to remotely identify any students she can't give you.
Right.
But she can give you large, just overviews of things, that's all she can give you.
I just want to set expectations, that's all.
Yes, there will be no discussion of any children or any of their disabilities or any of that.
Any further questions or comments on the superintendent of schools' report? Mrs. Guyan, Beauty and the Beast?
Mr. Freese, I loved hearing your report. That was awesome.
I was wrong. I thought I knew what you were going to say. That was awesome, Mr. Freese. Okay, moving on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Our phone lines are open at 860-665-8736. And we'll just give that a minute. This is a good time to remind folks that Dr. Collins updated the citizens' guide to the budget and did kind of a shorter document to hit the highlights of the budget, just so the community has some updated information, which is helpful after we go through some cuts. Phones are not ringing, so we will move on to remarks by board members. Mrs. Guyan?
First, I am relieved, as I think probably everyone around this table is, that the budget portion is done. It was, yeah, this was a much, although I am a little bit heartbroken, but I have hope. I'm optimistic. This was a lot better than in the last couple of years. And I wanted to point out a couple of fun things in the district. One, I got to go see Annie at Martin Kellogg, and it was spectacular, super fun, and I hope that a lot of the, well, the place was packed, so I know that a lot of people were there. So for the public, if you have an opportunity to go to any of the programs at the high school or the middle school, they are all fantastic. The spring concerts are coming up, so keep an eye out for those. The art show opens tomorrow, and it will be, it's on the third floor here until May 18th. Another great thing, if you are out in the community wondering what you should do with yourself, come in and see they have fabulous artwork upstairs. That's it. I just want to give shout-outs to my, to the students. Thanks.
Mrs. Droz?
I'm going to give a shout-out to my side of the town, because nothing ever seems to be shouted out over here. So show choir is on Wednesday night, and it is phenomenal, so it's our answer to Annie on our side of town. So if you're looking for something to do and you want to get up and dance, it is very fun. So that's our thing. So it is on Wednesday, the 25th, at 6:15. You do not need a ticket, and it's free this year, which, of course, I was like, "Charge, people will pay," but that's another story. So I am also relieved that this budget is over. I've learned a lot. I have to say, I came in here very agitated this evening, still frustrated with the whole process and the learning curve of the process, wish it could be more transparent and I could understand it better, but I guess in time that will be learned. So I am happy that we are opening our academies. That was my big thing, that I had had conversations with people, so kudos for getting that. And I do hope now, my friend, that we will be shaving.
Yeah, that was the promise. Tomorrow morning, I can't wait. Academies open, and I wish Carol was still here, and Bobby will be next in a second, but I texted her one day during all of this that I was calling it my budget beard, and I wouldn't shave until we opened the academies, and she sent me back a picture of Dumbledore. Lo and behold. Mr. Tufel?
I also went to see Annie. Great show. Really enjoyed it. Happy to hear that we put our priority in, possibility of what we talked, discussed, the members discussed at the table for middle school and the academies. Gladly, we, the funds will become available, and we will be able to fill them.
Thank you, Mr. Plord.
Kudos to all of you for doing that budget so quickly. I mean, I know it took a very long time. There's many, a lot of stuff that I obviously don't see behind the scenes, but, you know, I know from looking at past years, it's been a lot more grueling. So kudos to all of you for getting that done so efficiently and for, you know, doing things in a manner that, you know, was able to make everything, you know, not cut any teachers, not cut any significant programs, things like that, and open the academies. So very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plord. Mr. Sylvia?
Again, I'd like to apologize to the board for my emotional discussion. I'll leave it there. On the bright side, though, I did get a table for us at the NHS graduation comedy show. Fortunately, I was able to find people to fill the table. It was a great time, a lot of great laughs, good humor, and I have to give kudos to the group of parents to help put that together. It was really a nice show. And that should do it for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Mrs. Droz, you forgot something?
I'm so sorry. I know that we aren't allowed to go around, but I did promise that I would do a shout-out. They are looking for people to join the golf tournament for the safe grad night, and so Michael Turgeon of Turgeon Jewelers told me to say that if you needed him, to contact him, if you wanted to buy a sign, sponsor a sign, please sign up, and I assured him I would do that shout-out, so it is-
Where's he from again?
He is from Turgeon Jewelers. That's what he told me to say, so I have said-
I think you just violated a federal statute, Mrs. Stam. Free advertising from a political-
I can't wait to go get some jewelry fixed so I can, I can talk to him, I can say something.
Where are you going to go, Mrs. Stam?
I do want to thank you for your comment in regards to the academies when we were talking earlier, because that input is really important, because we want to know what the students are doing, and I really think it calmed down the discussion a little bit, because I knew we were all having a hard time understanding why we had so many kids won it last year, and I think you really, you started out shaky, but you really did a great job with, like, how you came around. I'm so pleased with that. But I am mostly, I'm glad, I am pleased that we are mostly on the same page as far as the budget is as a board this year, and I really do appreciate that. I am very hopeful about the social worker, and that that will come to fruition, and super glad about the fact that we're going to be able to open the academies, and proud about the fact that we were able to figure out how to make that happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vassell? I'm sorry, Rose is calling.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Plord for being here and taking part on our board meeting. I can't tell you the difference that it feels around the board, having the high school students sitting at the table, picking up the microphone, and joining in with our discussions, and I thank you very much for being here. I know it's a busy time of year for high school guys going around, but I do appreciate that, and that's all.
Thank you. Dr. Braverman?
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Plord, you do good work for us, keep it real, for sure. I just wanted to let you all know that the superintendent, sorry, I was going to call you the provost, has signed or has a new dual admission, a dual enrollment agreement with Central for 20 students, so I'm going to go and sort of bitch and moan a bit and say more. That's enough, 20. But I will be working on that, and I'm glad the budget is done. Hopefully, there'll be more money from some magic. We're still working on the magic. Thank you.
Mrs. Guyan forgot something?
Well, I just noticed that, well, not that I just noticed, but Pratchi's not here tonight. I believe she has a game, because I got a little message saying they picked up their first win, so yay, Pratchi!
Softball. Okay, down to me. So first, also went to Annie, saw my former neighbor in it, which was cool, and it is, Annie's actually honestly not one of my favorite shows, even though it's probably the one I've seen more than any other show in my life, but they did such a fantastic job, and really sometimes it does kind of blur the lines between a middle-school production and a high-school production that you would see anywhere else except for Newington, because our Newington productions are pretty great. But the kids are so talented, the amount of work that goes into it, and having been a former member and been on that stage before, the hours and the amount of time that the directors put into it, and it's a self-sustaining program that the board budget does not support, just like the Newington High School Musical, they did a fantastic job. And Matt wasn't here, I think, at our last meeting, when we talked incessantly, everyone who went, about how good your show was, Beauty and the Beast, and in particular, how good you were. You really owned the stage, and you're just so talented, and the board as a whole was incredibly proud of you, and it's really cool to have students who are both good students and incredibly talented in other areas, so really great job, and the whole production was great. The budget is over, finally, for us. Thank you to everyone for all of your hard work, to our administrators for answering countless questions, countless emails, countless meetings. I do want to make a couple of points about the budget this year. One, we're very fortunate that we got the increase that we did get from the town council. During discussions with them, it was not always the case that that would be what we got, and I thank everyone for all of your individual efforts, talking with people around town and with town council, really making our case for what we felt- and with town council, really making our case for what we felt we needed in district. If Mr. Brandon was here, I would direct these next comments to the both of you. But, Mrs. Droes, I will say congratulations on your first budget year. We said it midway through the budget, but your learning curve is much less, much less steep. That's good English. You have a less steep learning curve than many of us have had around this board. You will have no trouble in next year's budget of any kind. I will also say to your comment, and Mr. Brandon, I would say something similar to him, I will also say to your comment about increased transparency, always the goal. The one big shift this year was doing it school by school for staffing purposes. We will, of course, get back to the table immediately to try to do a couple of other things. I actually went through Weathersfield budget, and I couldn't believe what they show. But Dr. Collins has his own feelings on that, which we can discuss at a later time. But there are other ways to improve the transparency, and I want to continue doing that. I think one thing we have to be proud of is that after tonight, we've now spent 20 hours this year in public discussing the budget around this table, which is an incredible amount of time. And we really have gone over into every single thing that we're spending money on at one point or another. So I think that that is something that we should always consider moving forward, that the discussions we have around this table are incredibly important. They are stored for the public. So if anyone wants to go back to our February workshops and see more line by line exactly what we're doing, they are free to do that, thanks to NCTV. I will lastly say that now that budget is over, it turns into the fun part of the year. This is the time when we're getting invitations to really a lot of celebratory events around the schools. I encourage all of you to go to as many as you can.